Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for July 30th, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of post- of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting the host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Better Braza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Aiken.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. De fuego, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start off today's meeting with the requesting the approval of hearing minutes from July 16th of this year. I'll make a motion that the minutes are accepted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the extensions scheduled for 9:30. I'll read all of the extensions in one after the other. They're all looking for one-year extension. If any one of the members have questions about any of those in particular, we can take those after I finish and we'll move on from there. First, we have case BOA 1159113 with the address of 693 Cummins Highway. Then we have case BOA 1359889 with the address of 400 Melnea Cass Boulevard. Along with that one, we have case BOA 1359896 with the address of 402 Melnea Cass Boulevard. Then we have case BOA 1387348 with the address of 55 Meridian Street. Then we have case BOA 1176005 with the address of 1717 to 1719 Hyde Park Avenue. Then we have case BOA 1287036 with the address of 1759 to 1763 Washington Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1142166 with the address of 15 Leedsville Street. At this point, I'll ask if the board has any question before we move forward. What are your names?
If not, may I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
A motion to grant the extensions as requested.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
At this point, we'll move on to the recommendations from the recent subcommittee hearing. I'll read through all of them, what was noted on, and then make a motion to accept all of them at the end. We'll begin with case BOA 1602850 with the address of 358 to 360 Hanover Street. This case was approved with Parks and Recreation review. Then we have case BOA 1603917 with the address of 55 to 59 Caldwell Street. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1599266 with the address of 767 East Broadway. This was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1588821 with the address of 12 Norminian Street. This case was approved. Then we have case BOA 1589188 with the address of 1362 to 1378 Dorchester Avenue. This was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1603475 with the address of 400 to 412 the Ponce Avenue. This was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1593040 with the address of 9 Multry Street. The case was approved. Then we have case BOA 1561260 with the address of 25 Nelson Street. The case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1591995 with the address of 497 to 505 Washington Street. This was approved. Next, we have case BOA 15784668 with the address of 15 Cornell Street. This case was approved with no building code in the waiver. Then we have case BOA 1601690 with the address of 470 Center Street. The case was approved with the proviso to reduce the rear deck by two feet and nine inches. Next, we have case BOA 1567484 with the address of 6 Storkham Road. The case was approved. Then we have case BOA 158727527 with the address of 287 to 289 Beach Street. Case was deferred until today to be heard. Case BOA 1608760 with the address of 100 Westover Street was approved. And finally, for the recommendations, we have case BOA 1605078 with the address of 41 Redgate Road, which was approved.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve all the recommendations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
At this point, we will move on to the case of the hearing scheduled for 9:30. We'll begin with the groundwater conservation overlay district hearings. First, first one we have is case BOA 1520229 with the address of 208 Beacon Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative's presence that they explain to the board with.
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on? Hold on a second. See a hand raised. Joanna, are you here to present for this case?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Johanna Schneider from the Law from the Pedeleon Barnes. On behalf of the property owners David and Kristen Tabers, this application seeks a G-POD permit in connection with a project to update the rear yard and patio of a single-family residence at 208 Beacon Street on Beacon Hill. On the line with me are the project civil engineer, Brian Nelson of Metro West Engineering. He submitted a signed stamped "No Harm" letter on August 24th, 2023, as required by Article 32. And on May 20th, 2024, BWSC issued a letter stating that the site plan meets the requirements of G-POD. As I said, the civil engineer, Brian Nelson, is on the line, and the project manager is also on the line if the board would like to hear from either one about the scope of the project or the specifics of the groundwater storage recharge system.
Any questions from the board? Is Mr. Semenelli on?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have both G-POD letters from the applicant.
Thank you. And we did just receive a letter from City Councilor Durkin's office just confirming whether asking about the deck and the hot tub project, whether you'll be back in front of us for that? Or is this all together?
This is, this is all together. There is no relief required. The rest of it is compliant.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that the plans be reviewed and approved by Boston Water and Sewer Commission due to its location in G-POD.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1563973 with the address of 581 Boilsom Street, which is also G-POD hit. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Vanessa, are you here for this proposal? Sent a request to unmute you.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so we are requesting relief from Article 32, Section 4 for the groundwater conservation overlay district. The purpose of our project is corn shell interior and exterior renovations, mechanical, electrical, and fire alarm upgrades and selective demo work. We do have a letter from BWSC of compliance dated June 10th, 2024, and to the Boston Water Sewer stamped plans dated June 4th.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No. Mr. Semenelli.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have both G-POD letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, motion?
Madam Chair, can I just ask for a classification if Semenelli basically...
Do you want your video on?
Yeah.
Oh, if, if Semenelli basically mentions that they have reviewed and appro- they have reviewed the draw, the water, the letters on file, do we need to add with a proviso? Or can we just say approve since he's already confirmed that he has the documents needed?
You don't need to add, yeah, you don't need to add a proviso because the plans have already been approved by Water and Sewer and we've received...
Right, so, oh, great. So I want to make sure that I remove that second step. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. So I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado. Ms. Panado? Did we lose Ms. Panado?
We...
Okay, well, the chair votes yes and the motion to the...
Oh, that's a fair.
Uh, if you're an attendee, Jessica, if you could change her back to a panelist. All right.
And we go...
Either way, she carries. Yep, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, we move on to the regular hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. And we'll begin with case BOA.
You want to ask about deferrals or withdrawals?
That would be a different. If there are anyone, if anyone has any request for withdrawals or deferrals from applications for the 9:30 a.m. timeframe.
3:32 West Broadway, Mr. Stenbridge.
There with me, please. So that would be for case BOA 1599860.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, it goes to 3:32 West Broadway. Would you please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, with that as a moranty business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're asking for a short deferral on this. There was a discrepancy with the revised set of plans that were submitted to the plans examiner. We are in the process of clearing that up, and this will also have to be re-advertized with the correct violations that are on that letter. So with that being said, we'd just like to request a short deferral.
Okay. Carolyn. Or Samantha, do a date.
Madam Chair, the next date that we would have is August 13th.
Attorney Spitz.
Works for me. But would that be, would, so where is, if it's August 13th, would that allow the board a sufficient amount of time to re-advertize?
I apologize. Um, we would have to push that to September, the earliest being September 10th.
We'll take it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to postpone until September 10th.
Hey, may I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I bring up 1757 Hill?
Okay.
Yes, you may. And that would be for case BOA 15535. Case BOA 1553581 with the address of 175 Savant Hill Avenue. Could you go ahead and explain, please?
Madam Chair, this is Eric Zacherson, architect of the project with context at, um, 9 Sackville Street, Charlestown. The clients would like to request a three-month deferral while they deal with some family issues. I'm not the, I don't know very much about it, but they called me and asked me if I could ask for a three-month deferral.
Okay. Samantha?
Madam Chair, we could do October 29th or November 19th.
Mr. Zacherson?
We'll take the November date. Just to be certain.
All right. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer until this, this case until this November 19th?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
If there are no further requests for withdrawals on the 9:30 hearings, we will begin with case BOA 1353108 with the address of 6 Dana Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Any raised hands, Jessica? I see no raised hands.
I thought we deferred 6 Dana Street, Dana Ave. Or we're looking at 308 Norwell next?
We, no, no one requested a deferral for 6 Dana Ave.
Well.
Okay, well, keep going.
Okay. So we'll move on to, for now, we'll move on to case BOA 1598752 with the address of 308 Norwell Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small of a business address of 51 Dobson Road. We're here today seeking relief to demolish the existing structure and erect a building for 10 residential units, eight parking spaces, and one retail space on the ground floor. Here, the zoning district is a 3F 6,000. Our lot size is 10,200 square feet. The violations are as follows: building height. The requirement is two and a half stories at 35 feet. We are proposing three stories at 41 feet. The FAR, the FAR, required FAR here is 0.4. We are proposing 0.6 as, again, our lot size is 10,200 square feet. Uh, we have, they cited us for side yard violation at 10 feet, but we aren't at 10 feet on one side. And we are in the rear yard violation, 30 feet in the rear. And coming off the rear where the parking is, we have a distance of about 30, 32 feet in the rear. Madam Chair, we are proposing six two-bedroom units at 690 square feet to 845 square feet, and four one-bedroom units at a range of 405 square feet to 502 square feet. We do have a group two accessible unit on the first floor for handicap accessibility, and that unit is at 845 square feet. We are working with the Mayor's Office of Housing on this project with regard to the requirements for IDP policy, and they are suggesting that we ask for proviso, that we enter into a housing agreement to comply with the IDP. And we all have been having conversations with them on that. We'll stop there at this time, Madam Chair. Take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Small. So for the IDP agreement, how many units will be the contribution?
We are required one, but we are talking about two or one and a proposed contribution into the housing fund.
Thank you. So it's 10%, so you are required one, two, and three, right? So two makes sense. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And again, those discussions are ongoing as, but they haven't started.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony? I can't see it doing. Is there public testimony?
Sorry. Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Due to personnel changes, we don't have a ton of information on this application. But as, as mentioned from the applicant, with the 10 units proposed, they're working with the Mayor's Office of Housing on the IDP policy. With that, we'll refer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will add that we do have a letter of support from the community group WOW. It should be in the file as we had had lengthy and conversations and discussions with them as we attended like three or four of their meetings regarding this project.
We do also have a letter of opposition from the River Street Civic Association. So after public testimony, perhaps I can, we can ask about that as well. Are there any other, any other public testimonies issued?
Madam Chair, I see no raised hands at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Small, do you want to just address that? They just mentioned the sort of, that they weren't communicated with and, you know, as part of the community process.
Yeah, we went through a lengthy community process through Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services with WOW and with the City Councilor Brian Rorrell's office. And I know there were, again, there were a number of public meetings. I'd never heard of River Street before in that area.
Okay.
No, near River Street.
Any other raised hands? I mean, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question about the, the parking and accessibility. I see sort of two large curb cuts and a large driveway. And for eight parking spaces, that seems excessive. So can you just walk through sort of the parking arrangement, the curb cuts?
There's only one park, there's only one curb cut coming off of Norwell Street.
Okay.
That is existing, and the parking will go under the building. And in the rear, there are eight parking spaces.
Eight parking, eight parking spaces for how many units again?
10 units.
For 10 units?
That's correct.
And, and usable open space, can you just remind me of that? And usable open space, can you just remind me of that versus the required usable open space?
Required use for open space was, we weren't cited for it, but we do have, we do have yard space, and there is a deck.
Okay. So you're compliant with usable open space?
That is correct. We were not cited.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, that right now, you're only showing solar panels on the roof, but is your intention to put roof decks eventually, like to come before us for a roof deck permit?
No, we're not. There, if, the plans show a deck off the third floor, and we are planning to do solar panels on, on the roof of the building.
Right. Because you do have two kind of penthouse access to the roof, and, and so typically, you know, one would be sufficient for roof access for mechanical reasons, so that's why I was asking whether you were planning to do roof decks.
No, we're not planning to do roof decks.
Okay. Great. I don't have further questions. Okay.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, quickly, we have five comments from the Disabilities Commission. Do we want to?
Okay.
Commented very heavily on this, so Mr. Small, would you help those?
Run us through them?
Yes, we do have those, and I know because of the, we talked with folks regarding that with regard to the Disabilities Commission's comments, and because the area is sloped, we do have, again, we do have the group-two ADA compliant unit on the first floor with regard to that. We are proposing no elevators at this time, but when the final construction drawings are submitted to ISD, the architect will comply, we will comply with all of the requested interest by the Disabilities Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with, with some provizals, one being that the applicant comes to an agreement with MOH in regards to some of the affordable units potentially on the property. The second proviso is to work with the Boston Planet Department on a couple of items that I'm gonna note. One is the parking layout to work on the site planning of it in regards to the amount of parking space in relation to open space. The second being the curb cut in terms of its dimensions. We typically like to see ten feet. The third is to address all of the accessibility issues as it comes to accessible parking and shortest route to the building. The third is to look at the overall massing of the project in relationship to its context. And lastly, is to ensure that the penthouse has kind of a slope, so it doesn't completely protrude out to the public way in terms of its ceiling.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? There is Mr. Collins?
It's just muted.
Oh. Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Collins?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be there.
Next, we have case BOA one five eight four eight six two with the address of thirty-one Morton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, this is Cynthia Edwards of thirty-one Old Morton Street. I also have my architect on the line, Mark Schreiber. I'm not sure if he was able to raise his hand. I think he's on the meeting as well. He can present the drawings to us. In essence, we're proposing an addition of roof dormers to extend our living space up into the attic level. It includes modification of the existing roof to include dormers and create a half-story with the building not to exceed two point five floors. The roof itself was, is in need of repair, and that's why we're proposing to add the dormers. Mark, if he's on the line, hopefully can explain a little more of the architectural plans.
Do you want to proceed until he joins us?
Um, but he was on the line. Let's check and see if he can. Sure, we can. I'm also here with Mark.
Oh, here we go. Here we go. He's here?
All right. This is Mark Schreiber, three seventy Gosling, Lancaster, Mass., licensed architect, the state of Massachusetts. So yes, Cynthia is correct. This property did have damage to the roof and/or a fire, and so the roof is completely compromised. There is an existing stair up to the attic, and at some point in time, the attic was livable area with a window. So what we're proposing is, yes, you're on the right page. So those are the existing plans right there, kind of showing the dotted lines of the stair going up to the attic. What we're proposing is to stack a stair over top of the existing stair up to the third floor as far as efficiency of space, structure, and so forth. And along with that new stair, we're, we propose to add a dormer on the side street to allow headroom. Yes, so there, there we are. So you can see kind of the new stair and the dormer replicates that position going up to the attic area of the third floor. So this, this building is a first-floor unit, which is the first unit. Then we have a second slash third-floor unit. So there's two units in the building, and what we're proposing is the dormer on Morton Street. Let's see, no, it's the side street. So we have, we have a dormer where the stair is, and then on the opposite side of the roof, we're putting in an equal-sized dormer to allow windows in the bedroom as well as windows into the bathroom. So now you can see the side elevation. Basically, this is the side yard elevation in the top right of the plan, which comprises a bedroom window and a bathroom window and gets us adequate head height to meet code. The next sheet shows both the building section at the dormer as well as the street-side dormer for the stair coming up through to the second floor. We're keeping the existing ridge height, and we're keeping the existing gable end facing Morton Street so that it doesn't totally disrupt the historic significance of the house. The dormers are shown on the first sheet, which is the, the perspective view, so you can kind of see the before and after as to how the building is affected. But like I said, the main, the main roof is going to remain. The ridge remains, and we're simply adding the dormer on, on both sides. That's, that's basically the gist of what we're trying to accomplish, both in repairing the roof and while that repair is being done, expanding to create proper, a proper code width stair and proper code head height to get into the space.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, and I'm one of the community engaged with specialists for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, my office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. A community process was conducted for thirty-one Old Morton Street within a Butters meeting on April eleventh. That was likely attended, and no negative comments were presented. We did have one community member speak in support of the proposal, where they said that they were happy to see the home go to people who were taking care of it after the fire. The applicants are encouraged to meet with the Lower Mill Civic Association and have their meeting on May twenty-first. They met with the board of the association, and they voted in on opposition. Again, at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. And I misspoke earlier. The River Street Association letter that I spoke of was in reference to this project. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second. Take one.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Next case has been deferred, so we move on to case BOA one five six six nine nine one with the address of twelve to eighteenth Sawyer Avenue. The applicant and/or their representative is present. Would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the proposal at twelve eighteen Sawyer Ave in Dorchester. Just quickly, this zoning is two-family five thousand. This lot size is ten thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet. The proposal is to erase an existing single-family dwelling on the project site and build a new four-story four-townhouse building with a two-car garage parking upgrade for each unit. The unit mix is, each will be three-bed, three-and-a-half-baths, and there's approximately seventeen hundred and fourteen square feet. In regard to the parking, the three parking spaces were an element that the Butters wanted but were opposed to surface parking. We found the parking being internal to the building both satisfied the Butters' need as well as preserved open space. Through that, we also had the support of the Butters and the support of the Jones Hill Civic Association. There's a BPDA recommendation kind of focused on the height. The height of this building came in as a result of trying to offer parking internal to the building in an effort, again, to preserve open space. We are providing over thirteen hundred and seventy-five square feet per unit of open space. And then there was another with respect to a side yard violation. That violation has been corrected, and we would take a proviso. I don't think the plans have caught up with the presentation before you guys this morning, but the violation was four feet on one side, so that has been brought to be zoning compliant at ten feet. So we have a ten feet and a twelve feet on the side yards. We had gone to a lengthy community process, and we had provided letters of support, and I believe that there'll be Butters and elected speaking in favor of this proposal this morning. I'm joined this morning by James Christopher six eight six Architects, who can answer any questions to board they have. Thank you for attending.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Joe Henry Bembry.
Mr. Bembry, you're going in and out. You're actually frozen. All right. So we might want to move on, and Mr. Bembry, hopefully we can resolve his issue. I see Counselor Murphy's office.
Hello, and good morning. Hello, and good morning. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the board. My, for the record, my name is Kevin O'Sullivan. I'm from Counselor at Large, Aaron Murphy's office. Counselor Murphy does want to go on the record in support of this project as presented with the parking, so thank you very much for your time and your consideration, and again, Counselor Murphy in support of this project. Thank you.
Going back.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Ramus from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like, also like to go on record in support of the proposal due to the onsite, onsite parking, which the community and local civic association supported for the project. We also think it's important to get this part of bill to help alleviate the ongoing housing crisis. Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Okay, Mr. Bembry.
Yes.
Let's give it another try.
Yes, my apologies. I'm not sure what happened with my Wi-Fi. I'm, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Joe Henry Bembry. I am the Mid Door Chester Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting facilitated on April eighth and a civic meeting on May eighth. The Butters did not voice any opposition. There were a few concerns raised regarding parking curb cuts. They also mentioned the movement of landmarks and trees, which were addressed at that time. They then went before the civic who did approve the project. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, are there other raised hands?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, can you please proceed?
Apologies. My name is Matt Garland. I live at twenty-six Pebrell Street, so I'm very close to this project, and I just wanted to voice my support for it. They have engaged the Jones Hill community to get our input on it, especially when it came to curb cuts, parking, the exterior view of the building as well, and I think it's much needed in the area and very well thought out, and a great use of the space.
Thank you. Okay. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, there's one more. Franz?
Good. Thank you for, not so many in quickly. Thank you for your time. I live at Thirty-Sour Avenue. I'm a direct Butter to this project, and I too am dialing in to voice my support for the project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
There's one more. Hand raised. Hearing?
That, that was Counselor Murphy's office.
Okay. Thank you.
The.
No more.
Yes, Mr. Aiken?
One question just for Attorney Pulgeni. So you're saying that all the relief is still requested except for the side yard insufficient at this point in time?
Correct. So the side yard will go away, Mr. Aiken?
Okay. Thank you.
Not a big of hands.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna put forth a motion. I, in terms of the typology that exists in a neighborhood, I think the diversity of townhouses would actually complement it. There's a large kind of apartment block building right in front of it. There's a couple of triple-deckers, gable-house roof. For these reasons, I'm gonna put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that it gets planning department design review, and that there's no relief for a side yard setback.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Mr. Stenbridge, are you on mute?
Not new more. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, you, next we have case BOA one six zero, one six zero, one five nine three with the address of twenty-six Notre Dom Street. This is a Article eighty case. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colty Miller, and Hanley, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston, here representing the LLLC. With me is Taba Moses, who is the principal of the LLC. Also with me is Will Chalfont, who is the project architect from KDA Architects. And if I can ask, Madam Ambassador, if you could elevate Will Chalfont as panelist for part of this presentation? as panelist for part of this presentation? And I will kick it off and then hand it to Will to quickly go through the project design and plans. So the presentation you have in the case before you, 26 Notre Dame Street is in the Roxbury Neighborhood District, in the MFR sub-district and just outside of Eggleston Square. And if you turn to the next page, Madam Ambassador, I'll show you the site context. So there are four parcels adjacent and together here that amount to almost 12,000 square feet of land. There's an existing distressed, nonhistoric and vacant single-family that would be removed. And the rest of the site, as you can see, is impervious, unimproved surface areas with no street trees and a deficient public realm. It's a mid-block condition on Notre Dame Street, and you can see in this, in these photographs, sort of the immediate area. Next slide, just to show the consistency with the context of the area. Again, within the MFR zone and the surrounding sections just away from Columbus Avenue, the intersection of Columbus and Washington Street. And you will see both on Columbus, Washington Street and lower down on Notre Dame Street as well, the context for multifamily residential in a scale similar to what is being proposed here, both in terms of height setbacks and obviously use. Next slide, please. So just put this into perspective within the walk shed, and this is supportive of the variance we need for parking. We are within a very short walk of both the Jackson Square train station as well as Stony Brook and along the many bus lines of the MBTA and also within lock-in distance of Eggleston Square, the YMCA and the like and those amenities. So what is being proposed? Next slide, Madam Ambassador, I'll tell you about the zoning. What is being proposed here is a five-story building of 26 units of homeownership, much-needed homeownership in a time where, in the current market, it's very difficult to deliver that. So we're excited to bring this to the much-needed housing crisis that we're experiencing. 26 units of homeownership, the majority of which are two bedrooms. We also have three-bedroom units as well. You'll see four of these units are going to be affordable, and one of the four is also a three-bedroom unit, which is north of 1,300 square feet, again, to address the needs for affordability. So what has happened here, if you go to the next slide, we have worked extensively through the BPDA process, as Mr. Stenbridge indicated. We were approved by the BPDA Board under Small Project Review in November of last year. And part of that, obviously, was not just the building and the use and the affordability, but also the really detailed site planning. And I showed you earlier, we have a deficient inaccessible public realm and sidewalks, and we have a lot of pervious surfaces that don't contribute or improve upon the existing conditions, both on the site and the neighborhood. And so we have improved them through this project, and the relief that is required is justified by the uniqueness of the site and the housing crisis and the ability to deliver this affordability and also consistent with the context in the area. So specifically, we need relief for the minimum lot area. Again, it's in a multifamily residential, which is required at 3,000 square feet per unit. We obviously have 26 units. The lot width, which we require relief from, as well as EFAR, is required at one, and we're just under 2.4 at 2.38. And then a series of setbacks at the front left and right side and the rear, which are justified by the combination of these three vacant parcels along with the removal of the site and the work that we're doing around it to site within the content. Extent consistency for the alignment of other buildings. We do meet the open space requirement, and I think you'll see in the plans that we are creating both an improved open space accommodation, both on our site as well as in the public realm with improved connectivity and new street trees. The parking, we need relief for insufficient parking, and we have 14 spaces that are proposed. That, too, was extensively processed through the BPDA Article 80 process and recommended for approval. We also have bike storage accommodation in addition to that. And the final relief that is required is for the building height, which you'll see in the plans to follow. We are at five stories in a zone that requires 35 feet in height. I'm sorry, four stories and 45 feet in height. So to comply with the spirit of that, you'll see this, we are four-stores raised along Notre Dame. We set back to a fifth-story element, and it's been studied and scoped in a way that comports with the spirit of that requirement, but also the context of the area and the need for housing, especially homeownership. So that's the zoning and the site. I'd like to hand it off to Will Chalfont to take you through the plans quickly. Well? All right, maybe not. So I'll do it rapidly. You're looking at the parking, the ground floor parking plan. Again, 14 spaces. You'll see the lobby and entrance to the right and on the far left, the complete streets compliance with new street trees and the like. Next slide shows you the, I talked about the open space, both in terms of our site but also the public realm, and you remember the context and the existing conditions. No street trees today. We're including full canopy street trees as well as this new landscaping zone and fencing zone along Notre Dame Street to improve and integrate at the mid-block condition. Next slide shows you that proposal a little closer up. Again, the front of Notre Dame Street. You'll see the ample sidewalk widths, the full accessibility, the furnishing and the street trees that are provided. Next slide shows you some of the contextual materials and mood boards that will drive this. And again, this is part of the Article 80 design review process. Next slide is the floor plans. And again, there are 16 two-bedroom units. We're talking about 26 units again. Again, majority of, they're all full-sized, not compact homeownership. We do have three three-bedrooms. And for the affordable component, we have four units, one one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom that, again, is north of 1,300 square feet, so good for family accommodation. Next slide shows you the floor plans as you go up, as well as in the blue, in the green code, those affordable units that I had mentioned. And the rooftop plan in the next slide. You'll see. And following that, we have a PB component that we're exploring on the roof. And on the next slide, it's here to see how this all comes in context with respect to the elevation. So as I indicated, for the height, we have to the ultimate roof, to the roof, we have a 51-foot in a 45-foot zone. And again, with a parapet and a further building section that then drops down to a fourth level that is actually less than the zoning requirement. It's about 41 feet. So that's how it presents itself along Notre Dame, and we continue that condition on its sides. And if you look at the next page, you'll see the rear elevation and the perspectives within context. It was important for us to, as part of the BPDA process, to study not just this site, but how this comports with Notre Dame and the surrounding area. So you'll see on A11, which is the next slide, I believe, how that comes in looking from the north in the upper right and the view from the south. And then we have an alley that is another condition that runs in the back of the site, which you can see, and then a section through on the bottom. And some renderings of how this, in the next slide, some renderings of how this beautifies, improves the condition of the site and the neighborhood at this mid-block condition. This is looking down Notre Dame Street, obviously in the right. You can see our building with the new sidewalk improvements and improved landscaping and open space. An aerial view is the next slide to show you this component of how this fits in. And again, you'll see to the rear of the site, the surrounding area, how the height, scale and scope of this is in context with the immediate neighborhood. And the final slide is our rendering looking at the building across from Notre Dame Street. And with that, I will say thank you and hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, this went through a BPDA-led community process involving a public meeting and then board approval in November of 2023. During that time period, there were some abutters who had some concerns regarding height and density. The applicant met several times, I understand, with the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association as well as the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. The Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association reached out to our office and asked that the BPDA consider design review to mitigate impact of ground-level parking. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other raised hand? I saw something from planning on. Okay, Scott, yeah, are you looking to speak on this? Can I mute yourself?
Yes. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Scott Greenhall, and I'm a project manager at the Planning Department. This project filed its small project review application on July 31st, 2023, and successfully completed the Article 80 review process. This process included a public meeting held on August 21st, 2023. The BPDA Board approved the project on November 16th, 2023. Thank you.
Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. I'm a chair, members of the board. This is Minor Poreis, representing the Carpenter Association. We'd like to go on record on the support of the project. Thanks.
Thanks. Michael?
Hi, yes. I'm a neighbor of a 116 School Street owner in Eggleston Square, and I just would like to voice my support of this project of the lack of inventory in the city right now.
Okay, what's your name?
Michael Dorian.
Oh, thank you. Okay, an iPhone 5 user? You looking to give testimony here? Let's see here.
Hi, look, I was actually, this is Taba Moses. I'm part of the actual team. I was supposed to move over to the other side.
Yeah.
No problem. Okay.
I won't, thank you.
Lose hands, yep. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1593008, with the address of 194 K Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Colty Miller and Hanley in Boston. With me today is Anat Beck Noctigal from Derek Rubenoff Architects, who's the architect, and James Avery, who's the owner of the third-floor unit, which this proposed roof deck is being, would be added to. Next slide, please. This is just an image of the building today with the team members that I just read into the record. James Avery is the owner of the top-floor unit at 194 K Street. It's an existing three-unit condo building at the corner of K Street and East Third Street in South Boston. He lives in the unit with his girlfriend. They purchased this unit in June of 2021, about a little over three years ago. And you can see here, the building is pretty new. It was constructed in 2019. It actually previously received zoning relief for the overall project from this board in April of 2017. And that zoning decision for the original building by the developer of the building does mention the proposed roof deck, but it was never actually constructed by the original developer. Next slide, please. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. This is just a roof deck plan and elevation section. A lot of information on here, but what Mr. Avery is proposing is for permission to construct a new private roof deck for his unit for exclusive use on this deeded rooftop condo area. This is homeownership building. Access to the roof deck you can see on the left is via a proposed new head house to replace what's there now, which is an existing roof bulkhead hatch, just to get up there for maintenance purposes. There's no change to the building footprint. The building will remain a three-family dwelling, and the roof deck is above 329 square feet in size. It's set back eight feet, five inches from the front of the building, as you can see on the left-hand side. And as a result, the new roof deck will really not be visible from the street. It would allow him to introduce more usable amenity and outdoor space specific to his unit. This building has little to no open space. There's no rear decks on it from the original building constructed a few years ago. So this would add open space to his unit at about just under 330 square feet, at 329 square feet. In the proposed new head house, you can see on the left side, and you can also see in the renderings, I'm sorry, the elevation on the upper right-hand side. It's as small as possible. It's only 72 square feet in size, and it's located at the rear and left of the site in a way that it's not visible from the street. Next slide, please. This is just the neighborhood context. You can see the building with the roof deck in red outline for the approximate location and size on the building and the proposed head house in yellow. And I think importantly, the board will note that it's consistent with many similar uses at numerous other residential buildings located on K Street on both sides of East Third. You can see a few directly across the street from his proposed deck. You could see some across East Third as well. And this deck is importantly also set back quite a bit more than these existing decks and is much smaller. Again, you could see roughly a dozen or so directly across the street and on the same side of the street. Next slide. Zoning code refusal letter. Happy to go through this in more detail, Madam Chair, if there are questions. But I think, again, the head house is small, is as small as functionally possible, at only approximately 72 square feet. There's no material impact on the street view due to its location. So we tried to have it require the minimum relief necessary for the zoning. But we do need zoning relief. I will note also that three of these floor area ratio, rear yard setback and side yard setback are all existing non-conformities from the original building construction. And then we were cited for roof structure restrictions due to the access. That is a conditional use permit. And we were cited for excessive height. We're a little confused about that. We thought it may have been an error. The roof deck is less than one foot above the roof, and the head house is not technically habitable for human occupancy. Deck is less than 330 square feet. So we were, we're not sure why we were cited for height, but we were. So happy to go into more detail on this if the board has any questions. And the last slide is just the zoning chart. Madam Ambassador, if you could, again, this just details what I mentioned. Three of the five are non-conformities. The roof structure restrictions is due to the head house. The side yard setback is an existing non-conformity. The head house is tucked as far over and as far back as possible, and that is why the relief is required. And I, next slide, I think is just the final slide. Madam Ambassador just shows you again the roof deck. There are any questions? And I would just end by saying, again, it's private to this unit. We would suggest it's appropriate to the premises, not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, because there are others. because there are others in the neighborhood. And we did our best to limit any visual impacts as a result. Happy to pause there, Madam Chair, and answer any questions that you may have, and thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ziggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters' meeting on May 23, which was lightly attended. Our offices received one comment in support and one comment in opposition. The gate-of-head civic group in this area is in opposition to this proposal as they're standing policy to oppose any new roof decks within their catchment area. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam, sorry.
Okay, yep, you got it.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Toldano from Councilor Flynn's office. At this time, Councilor Flynn would like to go and record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors and a butters during the community process regarding the construction of another deck in the residential neighborhood. Neighbors continue to highlight the negative impact with a combination of many roof decks constructed over the last couple of decades and a changing community that has become an attraction for young people on the weekends to continue to leave out their college days. With parties at all hours, trash removal issues coming from roof decks, Councilor Flynn continues to oppose this type of projects due to the negative impact on quality of life for neighbors. Our seniors present with disabilities in young families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, Marie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom McGuyzick. I live at 564 East Third Street and our director butter, by way of my backyard, with 194 K Street being 13 feet from my house. In South Boston, residential units are too close to each other to accommodate roof decks. We all moved in anticipating inner-city traffic and pedestrian noise, but roof decks are an unnecessary intrusion into one's private space. They might have seemed like a good idea in the past, but have proven to result in sleepless nights rocking people. Please, enough is enough. And looking at the plans, you know, they say the view from the street isn't there. It only moves it back towards my property, so please help me out. Thank you.
And have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll go for a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
The next case has been deferred, so move on to case BOA 1600947, with the address of 223 Newbury Street. The applicant and/or their representative is present. Would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stunbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pilgeni, on behalf of this proposal by Nicolei LLC. This is located at 223 Newbury Street. The zoning in this sub-district is B365. This lot size is 2,576 square feet. The application for this proposal is to change the use of the first floor of 223 Newbury Street. The current use is retail, and that would be changed to restaurant with small takeout. There'll be minor modifications to the building would be carried out to accommodate this change. The restaurant proposed to occupy the first floor will be KT. It's a Chinese chain tea drink shop. KT is an experienced and reputable chain with over 3,400 locations worldwide. This past December, the company opened its first U.S. store in New York City. It's now looking at more stores, including its location in Newbury Street. The hours will be from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Its menus will focus on serving various styles of tea, such as fruit tea, milk tea, bubble tea, and no alcohol will be served at this establishment. As I stated, the changes to the building, to implement this change of use will be internal, such as the construction of a kitchen space and installation of necessary equipment. There will be no addition, there will also be additional new signage to the building's hysteria that being the only exterior change. We have been cited for just one violation, which is a conditional use violation, believe it or not. Restaurant with takeout is a conditional use on Newbury Street. We had a very successful butters' meeting, as well as received support from the Neighborhood Association in the back bay. Happy to answer any questions for you all.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ziggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters' meeting on the 11th of June, which was lightly attended. The Neighborhood Association of Back Bays is in non-opposition to this proposal. Our office received one letter of opposition from a nearby business owner. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
And I have no raised hands at the moment. I wasn't sure if anyone else. Whoops, sorry, a hand just popped up. Erin?
Hello, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. My name is Kevin O'Sullivan, and for the record, I am from Counselor at Large Aaron Murphy's office. We wanted, Counselor Murphy wanted to go on the record in support of this project. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stunbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1598978, with the address of 32 Dwight Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, good morning, John Moran, Alpine Furniture Services, with the mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Madam Chair and members of the board, we seek zoning relief, two variances, and one conditional use permit. If we could focus on the site plan before you, it shows the proposed roof deck, which in fact is set back 15 feet, .3 feet from the front of the building and 8.1 feet from the rear wall of the building. This roof is unique in the sense that the roof plane does not extend to the rear or front walls, and therefore, we recite it for a dimensional setback violation. The proposed roof deck access is by hatch, and it is for the exclusive use of unit two. If we could scroll down to A201, which is the elevation. Right here, we're past it. This is the front and rear elevation. The rear to the right shows the two proposed rear decks, which are cantilevered and project six feet out into the rear yard in conform to all dimensional setbacks. The roof deck is shown, and the two proposed condenses, which are two feet, are shown in the right section of the elevation. The two condenses are screened by the roof deck and adjoining chimney and do not alter the profile of the roof or the streetscape. If we could scroll down to A301. Look. This shows the profile. And if we could focus on the roof, it shows that the roof itself does not extend to the front or rear walls of the building. In terms of the setback requirements, the requirement is a five-foot setback from the front and rear front and rear roof, but the roof does not extend to the front and rear walls of the building. I would suggest that it meets the intent of the setback, and relief should be granted. The, again, the proposed condenses are screened and set back at least seven feet from the rear wall and do not alter the profile of the roof or the streetscape. The proposed rear decks conform to the usual requirements of six feet and cantilevered. We had a very rigorous community process. On file is the non-opposition letter of the Eighth Street Civic Association. Noted therein is the comment that the developer applicant was very responsive to community concerns. Also on file is a letter from a director butter complimenting the project and the ability and efforts of reaching out to the butters, which suggests that this is a common approved project variances, and it will enhance the living space and environment of the two-unit owners. For that, I request that the zoning be granted.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, and I'm one of the community engagement specialists for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, I would like to defer to the judgment of the board. A community process was conducted for 32 Dwight Street with no butters being held on 528. That had more than six constituents in attendance and no negative comments represented. We did have some questions regarding fire escapes that were all adequately answered by the applicant. The applicants were encouraged to meet with the Eighth Street Neighborhood Association, and they voted as well, provided a letter in non-opposition. Again, at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and I don't see any raised hands at the moment. Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the proviso that the applicant goes through Landmarks Commission as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we have case BOA 1599560, with the address of 7 to 8 Park Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stunbridge. My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston, and thank you for this opportunity to present this project. The 7 and 8 Park Street belongs to the Union Club, and they have a, they're looking to make use of an unimproved deck roof at the moment. In the plan, you see a red line around the proposed roof deck area that we would like to build on this lower part of this side of the house. The other side is much taller. This shows the floor plan of the top floor, where we're creating an accessible entrance for someone in a wheelchair to be able to use the deck, as well as some new toilets. And the next drawing is the actual roof deck. It's around 1,200 square feet and would be set back. We would be going through the approval process with the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission next if we receive the zoning approval today. And there is, there is a violation for FAR. Revolves around an extension of a stairway to provide a second means of egress. This is an elevation from Park Street, the view from Boston Common. The proposed deck is on the right-hand side, as you can see in the lower part of the building. So it's set back to the chimney line and has minimal visibility. The deck will be a great feature for the club, a good improvement for the space, and we are seeking your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I have questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in a butters' meeting on June 10, at which no concerns were raised. Our office received no additional outreach regarding this proposal. There's no active civic group that claims this area, so we call that the conclusion of the community process. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura here from Councilor Flynn's office. I will read his letter of support. Dear members of the zoning board of appeal, I write in support of the project at Union Club located at 78 Park Street. The project will add a co-compliant roof deck and penthouse to the Union Club. Renovate the sixth floor to create wheelchair access with a new lift. Renovate existing spaces and extend the existing rear stairway to the roof in order to provide a second means of egress to the proposed roof deck. The project has gone through a good community process and received no opposition from a butters and have received positive review from the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. The project will expand dining and social gatherings for the Union Club and add up half a dozen jobs to its staff. I act as a proponent, work closely with neighbors during the construction phase, and address any quality of life issues that may arise. I hope that the board will grant this variance. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at ed@flint@boston.gov or at 617-635-3203. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no additional raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to court of approval with, aim for the plans to be submitted to the Boston Landmark Commission for review.
Berrazza, second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And are we back to 6 Dana?
We're gonna ask, sure. For case BOA 1353108, the address of 6 Dana Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present, so we represent the case?
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Louis? Matoot? Don't see any raised hands.
Or Victoria Hartford?
I was just listening.
Okay. I don't think he's on anymore. Okay. May I have a motion? I think the plural makes sense, but can I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case.
Now the second? Okay. Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. And we'll have a, I guess, a three-minute break until 11:00. Let's make that a five-minute break. Five.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Barbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Here votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So with that, we'll return to the beginning of the hearing scheduled for 11:00 AM.
They should do that.
First, we have case BOA 1598953 with the address of 21 Gray Cliff Road. If the applicants and their representatives present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Colgin, on behalf of this proposal at 20 Gray Cliff Road in Brighton. The zoning in this district is 2F5,000 and the lot size is 4,950 square feet. The property of 21 Gray Cliff is currently a two-family home with a two-bedroom unit on the first floor and one four-bedroom unit on the second floor. The proposal is to expand living space into the lower level of the building to accommodate two additional bedrooms resulting in one contiguous four-bedroom unit in the lower level in addition to the four-bed in the second level. The scope of the work will be the expansion and be quite minimal. It will involve installing new flooring, painting, walls, ceilings in the basement area as well as two new windows and entrance door in the basement for additional ingress. It went through a complete community process and a committee, a butters meeting as well as receiving the support from the BIA. The only violation we have here is FAR. Again, that is because we're expanding living space, but the exterior of the building will remain as it is today. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. With that, any questions from the board? Hearing none. We have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, see Johnson with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 21st of May at which three residents spoke in support of the proposal. Our office received one letter of opposition from an abutter asserting that work on the proposal had begun before any permits were issued. The Brighton Alston Improvement Association is an active civic group in this area. They are supportive of the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, um, hold on. Bill, go ahead. You're unneeded. The floor are we waiting on? There's one raised hand.
The next case.
Okay. Okay, uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that no building code relief be granted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Barbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your day.
Next, we have case BOA 1600988 with the address of 2193 to 2201 Commonwealth Avenue. The applicants and their representatives present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Madam Chair, I need to recute. I need to recute myself. Thank you.
Okay, so we are a six-member board.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colty Miller. And Hanley at 28 State Street in Boston represent being the applicant proponent, which is actions and spirits as their DBA. The principal, Andrew Arbini, who is with me. Just to go through this request, the proposal is to open a local small business boutique provisions market with the amenity of fine wine and spirits to be sold for packaged goods. The property is in the Alston Brighton Neighborhood District's local convenience sub-district, which allows the retail market component but requires a variance for its package store use. So just to, I think a good, a good thing to put on the record here is the planning department's recommendation of approval, which really speaks to the uniqueness and the justification for the variance. Obviously, I know you have it, but to sum this up, 2193 Com Ave, which goes to 2201 Com Ave, is a long-existing commercial retail hub building, a single-story building that has eight storefronts, food uses, market uses, real estate agency. And this locate, this site for the application and the appeal is a former UPS retail space. As you'll see in the plans, it is small and rectangular in shape. The property is owned by the Grealish family, which has long ties in Brighton neighborhood as residents in the immediate area and they're stewards of this, this building. The proposed use will have less of an impact, obviously, than a UPS store. But what is important, and you see this in the planning board recommendation, is it'll, it'll provide for a local amenity for, in an area where walkability is lacking for something like this. That is, the ability to do a boutique, small-scale provisions market and have the opportunity to have packaged alcohol for fine wines, spirits, and the like. We have gone through an extensive public process for this case, a meeting with the abutters. We got the support of the neighborhood group with the BIA. I would also note, Madam Chair, that this case will require licensing as well, which tends to include certain contingencies for operations and the use. So looking at the floor plan, again, very small in scale, approximately 932 square feet of sales space, very small. And within that, you have a series of programs that aren't just alcohol-related. There's a community tasting table, there'll be dried goods, and, and of course, the ability to, to have packaged goods for folks in the neighborhood. And further in support of the variance, and I think, you know, the planning department speaks to this, with respect to the Alston Brighton Needs Assessment of Imagine Boston 2030, really the need to provide walkability and to ensure that we don't have vacant spaces like this former UPS store. And we're providing offerings that are consistent with the neighborhood needs. And so what you'll hear and what you saw, Madam Chair, in the numerous letters of support, were from folks who live in this immediate area, in Brighton, in and around the site, and further supports the justification, which I think the planning department did such a good job in outlining. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. What hours of operations are you looking for?
So the hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sunday. But that also, Madam Chair, we will require, should we have the pleasure of approval for zoning, that will be a discussion with the licensing board as well.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Does the proponent have any track record operating a liquor store?
Yeah, so the proponent is, as I've mentioned, this, this space, the, the building is owned by a
Mr. Hanley, your face?
Family in this area. Mr. Arbini, who's, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Okay.
Okay.
Can you start over about their experience?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So Mr. Arbini, who is, who is on here, has, has gone through extensive training, tips training, has been working with our office as well as consultants. We also will have a manager of record who has specific experience and will be a part of the licensing board application. I think it's important to note, too, that these are local operators. When I say small main streets business, his family owns the building, lives in the neighborhood. And so obviously, he will have a lease, but it is very important for Andrew and his team to work very closely to ensure that the sale of alcohol is done in a responsible manner. And just to give you some examples on that, unlike, you know, the, the closest liquor store, which the BPDA notes is over a mile away, we don't plan to sell kegs, we don't plan to sell single, single beers, we don't plan to sell nips, we don't plan to do deliveries. And so all of that, you know, helps to mitigate that, any potential impacts, and addresses really that need that is, is identified by the BPDA recommendation, but also by the numerous residents who offered their support, coupled with Mr. Arbini and his manager of record, who will have extensive experience and will undergo both licensing board review and approval as well as certification by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission for the state of Massachusetts.
But I, I hear all that, but I'm hearing he doesn't have current existing experience operating a liquor store. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. Is there any difference between a small boutique and a regular liquor store?
I'm sorry, you, the, you said the size or boutique?
Yes. Is there, is there any difference from your proposal to a regular liquor store?
So, you know, that, these, these, this type of relief has routinely been granted when it's appropriate in scale and use, right? So one of the aspects of that is, for example, if you look at Huntington Market, which is also on Com Ave, this board approved the same variance in the same sub-district. And I assume that that is sort of an amenity, if you will, to the market concept. This is not a big box, Mr. Valencia, this is not a, a big box liquor component with, with only 900 square feet of sales space. A lot of it is meant to, to drive the provisions and the gourmet aspect. So yes, there is a difference from the sense of what gets licensed. It's obviously subject to the floor plan, so you can't, if you're licensed for only 900 square feet of sales space and it shows other non-alcohol-related aspects there, you can't just change that floor plan. So it, very minimal in scale, consistent with the small business. And I will say that, obviously, we're looking for a use, but with respect to the operator, Andrew Arbini, I think, would like to speak about this. But I will tell you that under Chapter 138, you, there is an extensive review as to who the manager is, how it's run, as well as the operator. There are plenty of places that maybe have folks who have experience that are negative in this situation. Andrew and his family are extremely well-prepared and will have a team that exceeds those requirements under Chapter 138. Andrew, do you want to speak?
Yes, I'd love to. Very, very quickly to Ms. Panado's point, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Excellent and fair question. I do not have experience managing a store of this nature. I have worked as a bartender and received tips certification in the past, and I am working closely with a manager, Amir Chowdhury, who has managed a portfolio of both liquor stores and convenience stores. And the liquor license would be in his name, and he would be responsible for the tips training of all staff and the management and inventories of the business, while I, I would be the kind of main owner and main operator. He would be the kind of main source of experience and influence on the business. So while I do have limited experience in this space, although some, I will be relying on a, on a trusted partner who is very experienced in managing a store of this nature. And then to Giovanni's point about what the differences here, I think there are several key differences between this and the image you have of a liquor store, and, and that's why we kind of play up the, the gourmet market aspect of this. We are seeing this more, while it will offer a full suite of alcohol wines and spirits, or beer, wine, and spirits, we are targeting a kind of higher price point, a more luxurious product. We are also featuring dry goods, prepared foods, meats and cheeses. The way I envision this store is specializing more in a gift basket or charcuterie board or pre-made charcuterie board-style gift basket, or any types of components that you might want for a type of appetizer or charcuterie board. Those types of things would, would occupy about a third of the store space, with the rest dedicated to wine, beers, and craft beers.
Yeah, so you're, to break that down, you know, Mr. Valencia, you're looking at like merely 600 square feet, right? And that's, you know, that's to say that, again, that this space was unique and what supports the variance is that this is a commercial property site.
Mr. Hanley, you've frozen again.
Doesn't have an ability to grow beyond that.
Mr. Hanley, you froze again, so I don't know if you-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you might want to start over.
Okay. I was just, I was just stating that if, you know, with the floor plan and the fact that the existing conditions here, right, and that as the board has granted these variances in this same sub-district, it is where you have a commercial property, right, that has been utilized, you know, for akin retail uses and the like, and then is appropriate in scale, so you're looking at about 600 square feet of, of alcohol space that is, is really driven through that boutique gourmet offering.
And would you say college students are a primary kind of market for, um, constituency or market for the other businesses?
Yeah, I'd actually love to say that, um, so absolutely-
That is, I would frequent the sub-shop or the, the other businesses right here, given, given the proximity to the campus?
So yeah, given the proximity to the campus, college students do frequent the location and visit the sub-shop and the pizza place. That being said, the target customer for a shop of this nature, the, the shop that I want to open up, is more the neighborhood. It's, it's an older client with more disposable income and frankly, is looking for a higher-end product. Frankly, with a space of this size, we will not be able to order large capacities beer in bulk where we'll make a profit off of selling in bulk. It's just not a viable business opportunity for a space this small. We would need to have a much larger warehouse to sell beers in huge quantities. What we're targeting is a higher-end client for wines and spirits. And, and I think the, the point that, that we're trying to, to highlight is that this neighborhood has so much that is geared towards the students and almost exclusively towards the students. Lots of fast casual dining, lots of quick, not even, not supermarket-style, but like convenience store-style convenience. And we think that this neighborhood would really benefit from something that is targeting the community as opposed to the students, and that is absolutely the target of the, the store here. And, and I think the owners of the building are also happy at having something that diversifies the offering a little bit. This is something that will bring a new type of customer to this industrial block.
Yeah, and, and, Panado, if I could just, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but if I could just follow up on that a little bit. So there has been some discussion, and we're very mindful of, of Boston College being nearby. We are on the north side of Commonwealth Ave. You, you need to cross four lanes, right, and a, and a train track. That's not to say folks wouldn't do that, but whereas there are other liquor stores that are also happen to be on the BC shuttle, like Huntington Market. And there are delivery companies that deliver alcohol throughout the neighborhood and will deliver to people that are 21 years old. That's not us either. This is really about the walkability. The existing tenants in this space now, we have a, a real estate office that is owned and operated by a local resident who lives two blocks away. The UPS store is, has a nearby resident. I used to use it. I didn't go to BC. I don't live at BC, obviously. So the other thing is, is, and this identified in the Needs Assessment for Alston Brighton, it's, the neighborhood has changed. And yes, Boston College happens to be there, but so does a vibrant neighborhood that has expanded in demographics and has written to you all and to the mayor's office to say, this is something that we want. So just, so, just because they happen to be close to BC, which by the way, sells alcohol, promotes alcohol at its football stadium, doesn't mean that the neighbor shouldn't have the opportunity for something different. And that's really what this is providing.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll open it to public testimony.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Here to testify that we did have this applicant do both an abutters meeting as well as reach out to the local civic association, the Brighton Alston Improvement Association in this case. Our office is aware that there was some confusion among residents in the abutters regarding the date of the hearing, owing to a misreading of the date on the website. And because of that, our office is going to request that the board defer this project to a later date. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, well, just check, we have additional raised hands here. Adriana?
Hi there, my name is Adriana Rojas. I am a resident of Brighton. I live right down the street on Lake Shore Road, and I'm actually very, very excited about this project. I am also a Boston College graduate. And just because the, there is a store across the street from the college doesn't mean that college students would be interested in it. I think that the offering is really something that's lacking in the neighborhood. I have to go to Marty's and Whole Foods in Meaton to get the sort of offerings that Andrew plans to have at this store. Having something within walking distance is something really, really nice for the age group that is well out of college. And we are professionals and want something local where we can get a nice gift basket, a nice cheese, a nice bottle of wine. So I'm fully supportive of this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy's office?
Oh, yep, Counselor Murphy, go ahead.
Hello and good morning. Hello and good morning, Madam Chair, and hello and good morning, members of the board. Counselor Murphy is in support of this project. For the record, also, I should start, I guess, by saying, my name is Kevin Lucell, and I am from Counselor-at-Large, Aaron Murphy's office. And again, Counselor Murphy is in support. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Am I, are you sure? Hello?
Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
You seemed to have a little echo. Can you hear me now, please?
Somebody seems to have two devices on. Mr. Galvin?
I don't have. I believe I only have one device.
Great, thank you.
Am I prepared to go forward?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. For the record, William F. Galvin, living in 46th Lake Street in Brighton, which is about nine buildings away from opposed site. I've been a resident of Lake Street for 40 years. First of all, I would strongly support the mayor's office request for defer of this hearing. As was noted in the mayor's office representative, it was misadvertising as to the date of the hearing. But probably more significantly, the process that was provided to the residents was deeply flawed. This project of this proposal was concealed from the residents by the applicants. They began their process early this year, but there was no indication publicly of it, and there still is not to this date at, at the location. There was a meeting held, which was limited in its access to people in late May. It was the first we heard about it afterwards. Subsequently, I offered to host a meeting, because I have been a public official in the area for almost 50 years and know all of the residents there. A meeting was held last week at Boston College, and we had only 20 residents who were in opposition to it. This has been concealed from the residents. They've not had the opportunity to respond to this proposal. Many of the residents are long-term homeowners, older people, people who have lived in the, in the residential area that have bought it for a long, long time, as I have. The reality is this, this proposal is nothing less than an effort to exploit its location close to Boston College. Those of us who've lived in the area as long as we have, have known that because of its proximity to the college and the number of college students who reside in the immediate area, there's been a tremendous problem with alcohol abuse and underage drinking virtually every weekend, and especially when there is college activities such as football games. Boston College has made its best effort to respond to this. They've in fact spent a lot of money on police. We call the police. I can tell you, I frequently have had to go out every weekend, pick up bottles, cans. My house is on the side, near the sidewalks, and we hear the loud noises late at night, the parties, all the rest of it. The idea of putting a liquor store here, there's a reason this is a forbidden use. This is a residential area. Mr. Hanley suggested that somehow the neighborhood was being ill-served by the tenancies here. Well, he's right about that, but he's right because the owners of the building have changed it. This, if you look at the jacket on this property, if you look at the history of this property, it had three commercial businesses, a hairdresser, some other activities that actually supported a neighborhood. Now it's eight. Four commercial victor, a common victorious license, there's four restaurants. It's basically become a food court for the university, and the university recognizes that. And that's why they so vigorously oppose this proposal, as do I. The reality is, is this is nothing less than an effort to exploit the location for the purpose of selling alcohol. As we all know, college students in their senior year, most of them are 21, they will be legally able to buy alcohol. The idea that somehow they weren't going to make their way here or they were going to ignore it that was too difficult to cross the train contracts is ludicrous. And in fact, if you want to know, you can see how used this is by the college students. I would invite the board to look at the property jacket for this property, because what you're going to see is the owners of this property have subdivided this property to such a point they can no longer contain the diners that they now provide for. And in fact, they're out on the sidewalk, on the public sidewalk, blocking it with tables that block the handicapped access. So the, the idea that this is somehow going to be helpful to the neighborhood is ridiculous. I also want to talk about the traffic and transportation, which I think is so important.
Please do wrap up, Mr. Galvin.
Well, I'll wrap up, and I'll, I'll wrap up by saying this. The transportation issue here is very critical. Lake Street's 22 feet wide. It's very difficult for people to make the turn. The delivery trucks that are already there are frequently parking on Lake Street in front of people's property and elsewhere. I would actually urge the board to take a view of this. I would request the board defer this, give it an opportunity, as the mayor's office has requested, an opportunity to be heard by all of the neighbors. Mr. Arbini does not have any experience in the liquor business. He's not even a resident of Massachusetts. He's a New York resident, if he were to tell you the truth. So the reality is, is the neighborhood needs a lot more reassurance from this. I would strongly urge the board to defer this matter and give it the full attention that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr.?
Would it be possible to speak to those points very briefly?
We will give you an opportunity after the public testimony wraps up. Okay. Yep, Frank, I see his hand is raised. You, you already spoke, right? Is there, is this a different Mr. Mendoza? Yeah, I see his hand is raised again. I'll, I'll put it down. I saw someone different, so I don't know.
That's not me, Madam Chair. I've already spoken and testified.
Okay. Okay, so who's?
Uh, hi, this is Ian Gleason. For some reason, my name came up as Frank Mendoza. I don't know what the technical, uh, a long-time resident. I'm a long-time resident of the area. I have no idea who you can call, Frank Mendoza. I'm a long-time resident of the area and 33 years, actually. The proposal, I think, is fantastic. It's, it's badly needed. The liquor stores in the area are lower grade. The idea of getting a high-end shop in this neighborhood that we can walk to is, is fantastic. And I'd like to speak to the, the last comments by Mr. Galvin. The neighborhood meeting that was held in Boston College, I don't know anyone that knew about that, is, we would have attended if, if we knew it was on. And to talk to the, the issue of the students, the students have 100% access to alcohol. Star Market has two or three aisles of discounted alcohol, and they just get in their cars and go over there and load up. This is, this is completely- This is completely insignificant to the issue. B.C. needs to educate their students on the dangers of excessive drinking and not be trying to block a young entrepreneur trying to set up a new business. Half the new businesses in Brighton are closing. Every second storefront is closed. And an entrepreneur like Andrew starting a new business is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Chair, there's about seven additional raised hands. Do you want me to keep going? We'll do as many as we can. I'm just going to ask everyone to be brief and add new information, and don't talk back and forth to each other. We're not addressing what other commentators are just saying, just why you're in support or opposition. Thank you.
Jessica, this is Annabelle, Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. May I speak?
Yes, please.
Annabelle from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We held our monthly meeting in June. It was a well-attended meeting, about 100 participants. About 25 to 30 were there specifically for this project. All residents of Undine, Lake, Lake Shore, Kenrick. We voted to support this project. We don't feel that it will harm the university. We do feel that it will provide a local convenience. It is on a train stop with ample parking. And we also feel that it is replacing the UPS store, which has high volumes of traffic with UPS pickups, Amazon drop-offs and pickups, FedEx, all day long, that having this use will actually alleviate the traffic issues there. And we do feel that it is consistent with other relief that was given to other local convenience zones such as this. So we'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. I also would like to speak as a director abutter who works right at that block and lives on Undine Road that walks to that block. And as a resident, not as a BIA, I'd like to go on record and support. I do not feel it will be harmful. It is a very small retail store that will cater to the residents, not the students. And I hope, I believe that they will be responsible in running a store that they will not sell to underage drinkers. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Madam Chair, person? Tom Keedy from Boston College?
Yes.
Okay for me to speak?
Cool. Yes.
My name is Tom Keedy. I'm the Vice President of Government Relations and Community Affairs at Boston College. We want to go on record strongly opposing this idea of putting a liquor store in this location. Boston College has approximately 9,800 undergraduate students. Half of them, approximately 4,500, are under the age of 21. We spend close to $100,000 a year on Boston Police Details, Boston College Police Details, along with a full-time employee who deals with off-campus behavior in this particular neighborhood. I absolutely support Secretary Galvin's opposition to this. I am stunned. We have worked very hard with the owners of this property and the attorney representing them saying that, you know, Boston College uses absolutely... All of those stores are there for B.C. students. And Secretary Galvin is correct, it is a food court. But adding a liquor store directly across the street from St. Ignatius Catholic Church, by the way, that has a mass beginning at 10:30 on a Sunday morning, and this liquor store wants to open up at 10:00 a.m., I think is ludicrous. I am very disappointed that the owners of this property want to put right across the street from half of our student body, a package store. And then on seven Saturdays in the fall, yes, we do have football games, but we also have alcohol inside the stadium, where IDs I looked at not once but twice, and we have hub security that works all of our sporting events to prevent underage drinking. This is not an add-on, this is not an improvement. I've attended three meetings on this, and Boston College wants to go on record with the Board of Appeal in opposition to this. There are better uses of this site, and the owners know that. Thank you.
Hi, this is Megan Melville.
Please proceed.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Megan Melville. I am actually a resident of West Roxbury. I'm one of the four owners of the retail location that spans from 2193...
Okay, so can we focus? We just want to focus on public testimony right now. We will circle back to the applicant at that time, if... Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Richard Wood?
Yes, I have been a resident of the neighborhood on 36th Lake Shore Road. I firmly stand behind Bill Galvin's assessment of this in opposition to this appeal. And I can testify at length on problems with student drinking. And I just want to say that I am very, very much opposed to this appeal.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, make your vote. Two more? Two more, okay. Sheila?
Hi, this is Sheila Gleason, I'm a 40-year resident, more than 40-year resident of Brighton, and I stand in support of this application. And I think for far too long, all of the institutions... I'm also a B.C. graduate. All of the institutions have dictated what happens in our neighborhood. And Oak Square is coming back again finally after the pandemic, after all the closed storefronts. And I really feel like a business like this will really benefit the neighborhood. And I would hate to see a large institution overriding the wishes of the residents. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, one more. Pete D.B.?
Thank you. Madam Chair, what is your question?
You move ahead.
Yeah, I'm also a resident of the neighborhood. And in our neighborhood, it isn't just very loud parties with clearly drunken students often on Saturday nights. It's drunken students literally falling asleep in people's backyards. They're so debilitated. And with respect, I think it doesn't really matter who the store is targeting, because the convenience is to walk across the street. There are only four parking spaces. But specifically, the issue I want to address is this: I'm a handicap person. I either use clutches or a cane to walk. There are picnic tables and benches on the sidewalk that block about 80% of the sidewalk. I don't know if the city gave permission or not. But it's treacherous to walk around them, especially when there are students there, to try to get to the team. And I feel as though I can't trust this owner to be responsible because of what has happened already. And I think there are 9,000 students who can walk across four lanes. That is disingenuous. There are traffic lights, people cross Commonwealth. I cross Commonwealth, too. So I stand in agreement with Secretary Galvin and Vice President Keating, and ask for to postpone this decision.
Thank you. So let's turn it back to the applicant and give him the chance to respond. I know we've gotten a lot of comments for and against.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just take it in order. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Neighborhood Services mentioned a confusion in the legal advertisement.
You should start. Please start over.
Neighborhood Services...
Mr. Hanley, you posed again, so this is it over.
Okay. So Neighborhood Services mentioned a issue, they said confusion of the legal advertisement. This hearing was properly advertised in compliance with the Enabling Act, the zoning code, and the open meeting law. The ZBA sent out the notices to the legal abutters within the correct time and with the hearing date and the matter. Mr. Galvin wouldn't have gotten that because he's not within the radius as a legal abutter for receiving notice. Also, in compliance with the open meeting law, the city clerk's office had this hearing, correct matter, correct hearing date posted within 48 hours on its site. And the hearing with the correct matter and the date was also published in the newspaper in accordance with the requirements. What is being referenced is something that happened for every single matter on the board today, not just us. The ZBA has a new tracker, which just, folks can go online and see where these hearings are. All of the cases for this hearing were included the wrong date, and that was corrected seven days ago. It's not even, the tracker's not even a requirement under the Enabling Act or the zoning code or the open meeting law. But even if it was, it was corrected seven days in advance. So we should not be treated any differently than the dozens of cases that this board has heard today, all of whom had that same confusion. Next is, I respect, you know, Mr. Galvin, although I do say there has not been any collaborations with Boston College from their end. We have been very eager to work with them. He mentioned a B.C. meeting, a meeting at B.C., and concerns about transparency. We were never invited to that meeting. So how can we engage and work together if we're not even asked to participate? We did go through a lengthy process with ONS. We did our abutters meeting. We got a standing ovation from the B.A.I.A. Representative from B.C. was there. I offered to continue to work with them. I will say I'm intrigued that Mr. Keedy mentioned that they have a full-time employee to do this. We would like to work with that full-time employee. We've had the opportunity, since this happened, to go over and look at B.C.'s program. They promote six different beers at Eagles Alley, which is the main entrance to the football stadium, which those 4,500 minors that Mr. Keedy references go through. Cisco, Alagash, Bud Light, also advertise Budweiser on the stairways and throughout. So I think there's a way for us to work together. And I will say, we also reviewed Boston College's ID process, and we will be more strict. We will have a state-of-the-art scanner. We, too, ask for backup as well. And clearly, we will have much less of an impact than a massive stadium with 4,500 underage students in there seeing and being promoted alcohol throughout. The last thing I'll say is, with respect to the traffic, and I think Annabelle nailed this pretty well, we're talking about 930 square feet of sales space for a walkable market, and again, only 600 square feet is alcohol. That is not massive deliveries. What I also have made clear is, unlike DoorDash, which B.C. also advertises on campus, that delivers liquor to people that are 21, we are not doing external deliveries either. And so if you look at a UPS store where folks are coming in with packages and packages are going out, far more traffic impacts than a walkable gourmet market where you can come in and get some wine and cheese and maybe sit at the community table, sample some craft beer, and go home with a bottle of wine for dinner. If you're interested in purchasing large packaged goods and 30 packs, we don't sell kegs, we don't sell nibs, you're not going to this store. And college students aren't going over to buy $100 bottle of scotch or kosher wine, which we would suggest in a neighborhood that has a very strong Orthodox and Jewish community that we can serve. And finally, Mr. Galvin talked about long-term neighbors. You heard today the support of many, many, like Ms. Gleason and others, who are longtime Brighton residents, but also live within the direct vicinity. And that's what was represented in the many letters of supports that you received. And I would just say that, again, my client is eager to continue to work with B.C., which we think will have a very good program. And as this process moves forward, we look forward to continuing the discussion with the licensing board as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion of a deferral for this case. We've heard from both sides on this. If there was confusion in terms of public meeting, as ONS stated, may have caused, then we need to, that should be addressed. And obviously, there are deeper issues that need to be addressed on both sides of this matter. So I would request a deferral.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No. I believe it sounds like the meeting was properly advertised and that we heard enough here to be able to make a decision today.
Ms. Panado?
I'll vote yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. We need it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Sam. The date, the next available date that we have available is September 24th.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Hanley?
We'll see you then.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, this is Sam. Would it be possible to call and request for withdrawals or deferrals for the 1130s before we continue?
Of course. Yes, of course.
So with that, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals of cases from the 1130 timeframe?
Hi, Kevin Joyce, Mr. Stenbridge. It's according to Monument Square, I request a withdrawal without prejudice. It's the last... Sorry for the confusion before.
Yeah, that's quite right. It was, Mr. Joyce. So that would be for case BOA 1597093 with the address of 22 Monument Square. Would you, if you would explain, then we'll settle on that, Mr. Joyce.
It's Kevin Joyce. I request a withdrawal without prejudice.
Excuse me. The excuse is withdrawal.
Just a withdrawal. I'm sorry. I missed it.
Yeah, that's quite all right. Is there, would you like to explain, or would you like to just leave it at that?
Just leave it at that. Just withdrawal without prejudice, please.
May I have a motion?
Oh, no.
I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, this will just be a straight withdrawal.
Okay, withdrawal. May I have a motion?
Motion to withdraw.
There's a second?
Second. Definitely.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. De Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Sorry for the trouble.
Now we'll move on to...
Mr. Stenbridge? Excuse me, Mr. Stenbridge. 94 through 96 Maureen Street, please.
So that would be for case BOA 1535566 with the address of 94 to 96 Maureen Street.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, First floor, South Boston. When this proposal was re-advertised, it was inadvertently, a violation was left off. They had to re-advertise, and I've already been provided a new date of August 13th. So, but I'm here today following the process and requesting a deferral on this matter.
Okay. Is there a date?
The date is August 13th, Madam Chair.
Mr. Spitz?
Right, yes, that works. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until August 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
No, I wasn't able to do that.
Ms. Beravazza?
Yes.
Because I caught her to get into this. That's why.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
But she said 15--
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
There's another hand raised.
Julie?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm wondering why we haven't gotten to the other remaining 11:00 a.m. hearings.
Because it's 11:30 and we're just required to ask if there are any deferrals. We will turn back to the elevens after that. Any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Okay, back to you, Mr. Stenbridge.
With that, we'll go to any 11, in 11 o'clock here, case BOA 1604907 with the address of 40 Emmett Street. If the applicant and board representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Can you raise your hand if you're on to this proposal?
All right.
Hi, you're unmuted. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. And Louis Santana should be on.
Yeah, he's unmuted as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a proposal for a single-family residence.
I'm sorry, we, we can barely hear you.
Is it better now?
Little bit. You just may need to be closer to the mic.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a proposal for a single-family residence, just under 1,800 square feet. We have one and a half-story, three bedrooms, and we would be adding dormers to the half-story. There are a few violations that I want to cover during the presentation. What you can see here, the owner, Mr. Motto, which is present, owns eight parcels adjacent to the existing 42 Emmett, which is the residence for economic resides. To the left of his property, there is a lot labeled number 82, which is the only one that it would be permissible to be developed based on the Conservation Commission restrictions on the adjacent lots. Next slide, please. The violations that we have, as you can see from this chart, are office street parking, design of the facilities. The other one is a lot with, we have also insufficient side yard, and we have insufficient or lack of existing building alignment. Next slide, please. Basically, this is the existing house, number 42, and to the left is the proposed construction. One of the reasons, one of the violations that we have, which is the office street parking design, we decided to utilize the existing large driveway. These lots are under common ownership, and the new residence is intended for a family member. The current driveway is about 20 feet, so we added two spaces within the lot of the proposed construction, and we want to use the same driveway. And the reason to that is we are trying to minimize impervious surface on the property due to the fact that this is in the vicinity of wetlands. The project, the property itself is within 200 feet of the wetland loafer zone, so the wetland restrictions do not apply, but yet, construction has to respect the conditions in the city of proposed residences for wetlands. Next slide, please. So we're going to utilize the topography in order to avoid a full basement and also excavation in the property. And on that is we're planning to minimize the impact in the area. So that, on the left side, that will be a slab concrete, and so it will be on the right side. So it's a bi-level situation due to a ledge on the left side, and you will be able to see that on the proposed elevations. Next slide, please. So that is the first floor, and the second floor, which will be the next slide, contains two bedrooms in a dormer A-frame construction type. If you can go to the elevations, please.
Keep going on the slides.
So that is the second floor, which is basically an A-frame with two dormers for two small bedrooms. And finally, the elevations will reflect the topography of this site on the next slide. Please continue to the next slide.
What slide, what, what page do you want him to go on? Can you help us?
Elevations, please.
What page? Okay, keep going.
That's good, that's good. That's good, thank you. So as you can see, that is-- Please stay on the previous slide. Okay, as you can see, that is the topography. On the left-hand side, we have ledge. On the right-hand side, it will be a bi-level situation. The construction is a slab concrete in order to adhere to the restrictions of the Conservation Commission. And as you can see from the second slide, which reflects on the lots, again, the owner owns a lot, four to the rear and four on Emmett Street. All those lots, with the exception of number 42 and existing houses and the proposed constructions, are subject to order of taken by the Conservation Commission. So they are not develop, you cannot develop those lots unless you go through the process with the Conservation Commission. We have indication, new writing from the Conservation Commission, that this particular lot, number 82, is not under the jurisdiction, and so is lot number 42, which is over rebuilt. We also reached out to Parks Department, and we adjusted the side yard to the left of the property in order to comply with the setback from the lot that is subject to the Conservation Commission restrictions. With that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Madam Chairman, and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the High Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on May 1st, and a civic meeting on June 3rd with High Park Neighborhood Association. No concerns were voiced during the abutters meeting. Project did go before the civic, who did approve and support the project. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to refer to the board for their judgment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, looks like I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
And Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with the proviso that the plans be submitted to the Boston Planning Department for site plan review and for preservations of landscape and trees.
Is there a second, or close? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Beravazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
The next case has been deferred, so with that, we will go to case BOA 1548122 with the address of 813 East Broadway. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, First Floor, South Boston. With me today is the owner Vivek Yadav, and as well as the project architect Jacob Levine. This is a proposal to extend an existing two-family dwelling by way of a rear addition, as well as an interior renovation of the floor layouts. I'd just like to just please note on the advertisement, it said that an elevator was included. That elevator was actually removed from the plans due to the neighborhood concerns, and is reflected in the drawings that you're seeing here today. The proposal is located within an MFR sub-district. There is only one zoning violation that we do have, a roof structure restriction, which is a conditional use permit, as the proposal of the addition alters the profile of the roof. That roof structure restriction came from a text amendment to the zoning code back in 2019. There are a couple of row houses on this same block that share similar architectural characteristics that have extended their buildings into their rear yard as well, specifically 817 and 823 East Broadway, which this proposal will be consistent with those two properties and will not damage the uniformity of the height or architectural character of the immediate vicinity, and exactly what is stated in the Planning Department's letter of recommendation of approval. The, the addition will extend an additional 35 feet from the existing structure, but will also maintain approximately a 35-foot setback in the rear, which is also a budding of 15-foot wide passageway right. Both units will now have better functionality and more needed space. Unit one will consist of the garden level in the first floor, which will contain a three-bed, three-bath, kitchen, dining, office space. Unit two will consist of the second floor and the third floor, four-bed, three-bath, kitchen, dining, and office space. There will also be, on each floor, there'll be 150 square-foot open space, rear decks in the back. At this point, I am going to pass it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted two abutters meetings, first on February 7th, the other on February, on, excuse me, May 29th, in regards to the proposal. The applicant also went on to meet with the City Point Neighborhood Association on June 11th. During the community process, we heard concerns from abutters regarding what they felt was a lack of historic context, the proposed scale of the project, as well as the design. They felt that the home is a part of a historic brownstone district in this part of South Boston. There was also concerns about the potential loss of green space in the rear of the property, and leading that, impacting the heat island effect. Also, concerns were raised regarding what they felt would be a loss of natural sunlight and airflow and privacy, as well as the roof structure violation. When the outcome went before the City Point Neighborhood Association, the civic offered its opposition to this proposal. Our office has additionally received 38 letters in opposition from abutters, as well as members of the broader community. With that, defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Laura here from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go record in opposition due to feedback from abutters neighbors and the City Point Neighborhood Association. As we received 23 letters and signatures against the proposal during the community process, neighbors called attention to the precedent that this rear extension requiring relief from the zoning code was set at this stretch across from Meadow Honor, Meadow Honor Park. Neighbors highlighted this extension would contradict the city's goal of preserving green and open space, potentially furthering a heat island effect, as well as deceased natural light, airflow, privacy for abutters, and overall quality of life as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I would like, thank you. This is Julie Berry. I'm an attorney at Prince Laval Thai, and I'm here representing Dr. Robert and Mrs. Jill Morris at 811 East Broadway. And I know that Dr. Morris is going to speak, so I am just going to speak to the legality here and let Dr. Morris speak about the impact. But I did file a letter with you this morning, and that our concerns are addressed in that letter, but I follow up on what was previously said. There are my clients abut this property directly. It is going to obliterate their sunlight. It is going to cause airflow problems, and there isn't any demonstration here that this unit is somehow, that this property is somehow different in kind or type, or that there is some economic hardship for this applicant, that the only way that they can develop this property is with what is proposed. There are numerous properties in this neighborhood. Everyone exists on the same parcels. There's, there hasn't been any demonstration that variances, which are supposed to be sparingly granted, even though that's often not the case. There isn't any evidence that this is entitled to a variance. And, and to refute what the applicant's attorney says, there are additional issues with this, including the excessive bar and the insufficient rear yard setback. It wasn't just the elevator. It's the height of this addition and everything that it purports to do because of it. We respectfully request that this petition be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Kevin O'Sullivan from Councilor at Large Erin Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy would like to echo the voice of the community, as well as that of Councilor Flynn, and state that Councilor Murphy is in opposition to this project. Thank you very much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. And we have a couple more raised hands. George? Oh, yeah, go ahead, George. We'll get to the City Point Neighborhood Association. I think you just put his hands down. City Point?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, so this is Luanne O'Conne, President of the City Point Neighborhood Association. We did in fact take a vote. The vote was overwhelming to oppose this project. There was only one vote in support. The, we asked that this board uphold the zoning, and this project does not meet the conditional use permit requirements. It is, the applicant, I just want to give you, it's very important. He is a Vietnam vet, and this is his home, his childhood home. And when the attorney was referencing 823 East Broadway, that developer's zoning attorney now lives in the Bahamas, that was a gift, a political gift for him to be allowed to build that particular structure. So it goes back to quality of life, it goes back to green space, it goes back to the heat island effect. And because there is a zoning violation, we ask that you uphold that zoning and let the people that live in those breaks, which are directly across from Meadow Levana Park, which you all know, including the mayor, to allow them to enjoy their space, their green space. So we are opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, ah, wow.
How do I get on now? Am I on?
Yes, can you speak to your name and address? Yeah, then tell us if you're in support or opposition.
Okay, yes, I'm in opposition. Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Dr. Robert Morris. My family has been in South Boston since the 1840s, practicing medicine since then. Our family has been at 811 East Broadway for some 120 years, three generations. We have worked hard to respect the historical nature of these brownstones, front and back. The ZBA's decision here is not a minor concern. It will affect these historically significant properties for the next 100 years. Developers will rush in to purchase and expand and destroy the green space that we have, which is a quadrant between 4th Street, M Street, N Street, and East Broadway, surely creating heat islands, as mentioned, scientifically documented by the Harvard School of Public Health and Boston University School of Public Health, with temperatures rising possibly by seven degrees. The project should be rejected. The historical value of the brownstones preserved, the green space saved for the next generation. The design is bad, belongs more in the seaport, and has no aesthetic or historical value. It deprives the longstanding residents of light, sun, air-- of light, sun, air, privacy, and casts a shadow on our house until 12 noon all days of the year. Finally, as noted, I have 36 of 38 attending abutters named and voted this project down in total. Not asking for changes, they don't want the project. Our basic human rights must be favored over this egregious...
Thank you. Yeah, Eileen?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Eileen Smith and I am a lifelong resident at 776 East Broadway. And I have sent a letter, but I do have additional comments. And this is, this project is an example of total destruction of our neighborhood for money interests. The project is in total contradiction to the mayor's priorities of affordability and equitable housing and does not embrace the city's vision. It negatively impacts quality of life for direct abutters, neighboring residents. We are losing sunlight, airflow, security. It's also important to note at this time that the developer does not live in South Boston. And yes, there was a similar project that was on that same block that unfortunately got approved at 823 and it should have never been approved, all of the same reasons that are being addressed today. And I ask that the board prioritize historic preservation, maintain open green space, protect our quality of life. Deny this request. This proposal is just pure overdevelopment and I thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, you want me to keep going? There's about four additional raised hands. We'll go as fast as we can and please add new information. Thank you. Trish?
Thank you, am I audible?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Trish Morris. I'm the daughter of Dr. Robert Morris and Jill Morris, 811 East Broadway is also my home. The new additional information that I want to add in opposition to this project in total is the risks that the construction and new extension caused for all of the neighbors, especially 811. They're not hypothetical risks. You heard about development at 817 and 823 East Broadway. We've already seen the impacts of that. So besides the heat, light and air loss, which is serious, we have seen damage to these historic and fragile homes. You heard about the neighbor George Balcones, which he might mention as well, but the project at 823 East Broadway that you heard about actually caused his wall to collapse. Again, these are not hypothetical threats to these houses when construction like this happens. You know, that's endangering his home and his family in addition to the costs that he's bearing of over $100,000 because the developer won't bear it for restoring his home after construction that is unnecessary and only in benefit to the developer who recently bought this house, 813 East Broadway. So I render my opposition with the 36 other members of the neighborhood, 36 of 38, to this project in full. And I'd like to note as well that the mayor's office has contacted us to say, actually, opposition rather than deferment to the board on this particular project. I can...
Hello? Jessica, are you still? I'm still here, I don't know, she was cut off. Hello? Can you keep going? Yep, Jill? I see City Council president represented? The testimony here? Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
I'll be your president, we'll see. The office, go ahead, Bianca?
Yes, hi, I'm here on behalf of the council president, Ruth C. Luigiann, and I'm here to go on record in opposition.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, can I just respond to a couple things briefly?
Uh, yes, I don't... Jessica, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll be brief. So Madam Chair, I just want to highlight there, you know, from the attorney that was speaking as well as some of the comments and concerns. First and foremost, we are not seeking any variances under the zoning code. We're seeking a conditional use permit that resulted from a text amendment in the zoning code back in 2019. Furthermore, it's very consistent with the two other properties and one that neighbors failed to mention that was specifically supported from the neighbors as well was 817 East Broadway. Further, we don't have a floor area violation. We are below compliant with 2.0. We don't have any sort of open space violation. We have, we have, what's required here is 200 square feet per unit. We're at approximately 1,205 total square feet for the property, which is well over. So again, there are no other violations. This is just a conditional use permit that we're seeking. So thank you for that moment to respond, Madam Chair.
Mr. Spitz, can I ask, the extension that you're requesting, how does it compare to the ones you're quoting?
So the 823 was deeper than the extension that we were, the first, this resulted in two different community meetings and a lot of the concerns we heard based from the first community meeting, we had, we did have more violations originally. We reduced it and what was told to was to take a deeper look at 817 and make it come in line. We did that, but again resulted in no support from any of the surrounding neighbors as you heard from today. But again, you know, we substantially changed those plans and which only resulted in that roof structure conditional use permit.
Other questions from the board?
I mean, I see a lot of very low additions and only one example on that block of an addition of that height. Why so high? Why not just a lower addition like some of the other buildings on that block?
So it was more so from the functionality standpoint. If you could see the existing condition of how the layouts were, it just, there wasn't, the functionality just didn't work. So the thought process was extending it back. If they did eliminate that section, that would be a zoning compliant project. So again, again, there are no variances here. Everything's dimensionally compliant within Article 68, again, except for that conditional use permit that we're seeking, which again, I just keep highlighting it was a result of a text amendment back to the zoning code in 2019.
Other questions from the board?
So there are no FAR or any other dimensional zoning violations?
No, there are not. What the FAR is required here is a 2.0 and we're at 1.81.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I based on the comments from the residents, this project is not increasing housing supply or increasing given space. I think the project can make some changes to just benefit the abutters and I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second? Okay, that was the second, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes, well?
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Better Boraza?
I know.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. Aiken?
No.
Ms. Panado?
No.
Chair votes yes, but the motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, oh, go ahead, David.
Thank you. A motion to approve with BPDA designer bid.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
No.
Ms. Better Boraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No, I don't believe it's met the threshold for a conditional use permit.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair votes no. This motion does not carry. Okay, Samantha, do we leave it here or do we require another vote?
So at this point, this is Caroline.
Yes.
We would have to either move for denial or deferral.
I think we already tried that, didn't we?
No, they said that.
Maybe a deferral. We have not tried that.
Well, may I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
Okay. I'm not even sure. Mr. Stenbridge? What hasn't come on? Oh?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Boraza?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Uh, no.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair is going to vote no, so this motion does not carry. Caroline?
Yes, so at this point, it would be a denial?
And do we need to make a motion or is it a denial?
No, you don't need to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, it just means that they can't reapply.
Another year.
You have to do a new design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Moving on to the last case scheduled for 1:00 o'clock, is case BOA 1607841 with the address of 200 State Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please go in the case to the board?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? I'm seeing no activity. I do see a raised hand. I tried to unmute them, but they're not accepting them. Natalie, are you on for this proposal?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Okay, last call for 200 State Street. Okay. Can I have a motion? Well, do we... Caroline, would we come back to it later or should we have a motion for deny without prejudice?
We, Madam Chair, you can either deny without prejudice or there can be a motion for a deferral.
Madam Chair, I can try calling the applicant and see if they're able to attend at a later time.
Yeah, then we can come back to it at the very end of the next session.
Okay, so can I skip it or do I need to have a motion for deferral? Caroline?
Let's do a motion for deferral just to make sure that everyone...
Sure, is there, may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion for deferral.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Boraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. So I'd like to...
Madam Chair, the date? Would be September 24th?
Okay, thank you. So let's hear the next case first because I think, before we take a break, because I think that one included an interpreter who's been waiting, if they're still here.
So with that, we'll move on to the rediscussion scheduled for 11:30. And the first case is case BOA 1587527 with the address of 287 to 289 Beach Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, great. You're the, Aruho, you are the translator, right?
I'll make you sure I understand 100%. I speak English, I understand, but my accent is too much stronger. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, no, so we do have an interpreter.
So do you require an interpreter or... Because if you do, they're going to need to start interpreting now. If you don't, then that's fine.
Okay, okay.
So do you need one or no? Ben Vito, who should be on? Yes, you need one? Okay. So let's invite, invite the interpreter to begin? Yep, if you're on interpreter, can you raise your hand? Mr. Cruz, we had it, Mr. Cruz? Are you still on? I don't see him in the chat. Uh-oh, okay. Um...
That's okay for me, that's okay for me.
Are you okay to proceed, Mr. O'Nell?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, pleasure, Mr. O'Nell. Okay. This project, a renovation of the basement, existing space, two-family, and rose and down. This space exists 100%. My client contacted my company about the renovation because have the family on first floor, he live on second floor. But my client, I need more space for laundry and one bathroom. He put two offices because have the family daycare on the second floor. He have too much paperwork. I have the meeting about the daycares. He have two kids in high school. I need two offices for accommodation, the paperwork, the meetings, too much time and a basement for possible use. In the reason, the finished basement, just the accommodation, the family living and property. I know include extra, extra space, extra peoples and house, just for accommodation, the peoples leaving and address.
Thank you. Caroline, could you just explain to us, to all the board members again, why this ended up here? Sort of a misunderstanding, I think, with the plans examiner?
Yeah, so there was a little confusion at the subcommittee because it said forbidden use. And so there was confusion over what the forbidden use was if it was a basement dwelling. But the plans examiner explained that the forbidden use is office space.
Okay, because that's what they're requesting. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Well, in regards to office space, the issue would then be, why is a full kitchen needed?
So that's a question to you, the applicant?
And closets, and closets as well.
Yeah, the reason the closets inside the office because the client have too much paperwork about the daycare. If the kids in high school create a space for accommodation, the paperwork, accommodation, the meetings, the drawers, the everything in house and, and house. But the...
Jeffrey, are you waiting? Was that Mr. Hampton?
Yes, ma'am.
You just froze.
It's accessory, maybe it was just applied for in the wrong way because the accessory office, if it's like a home office, should be allowed if the two...
You just muted, okay. We kind of incomplete, incompletely urge you, Mr. Hampton.
So I think, I think the office space is accessory office space, which would be allowed[1774.96] which would be allowed if it's less than 25 feet of the floor area. I think it was just one of those things where it may have been re, you know, the appellant may have applied for this incorrect.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Sorry, Madam Chair, it's Caroline.
Yes.
When I spoke to the plant examiner, he explained it's a residential. There's two, the stairs on the outside of the building. And because there were two offices in a residential neighborhood, technically a commercial office space, and so that's what it's for.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
I'm sorry, one more thing. You said that there was a childcare office above or daycare above?
Family daycare. A family daycare.
A family daycare above, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, just, I'm looking for more of like a safety issue, like having a full kitchen at the bottom, a full running office. I'm not sure if it's the appropriate use in a residential district. If it was an ancillary use, as Jeffrey mentioned, like home office, that's another thing. But those are just some of my concerns, and I'm just seeing it aloud. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. May I have public testimony? Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. We have the applicant circulate flyers to A-Bothers within 300 feet. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. We have them contact the West Village Neighborhood Association, which stated that they did not need the proponent to go before their membership without defer to the board. Thank you. Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, I see no additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with no building code release and BPDA designer review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Did Mr. Stenbridge disappear? Uh-oh, okay. I'm going to keep going. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Better Baraza?
I'm going to say no for the reasons I just stated.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. And I think the motion carries, but I think we also lost the, the motion carries, but I think we lost Mr. Stenbridge and Caroline. All right, let's take a pause. This might be a good time for a break, and we're going to find out what's happening. All right, so I think you're going to have to take your own break, I think. Jessica, do you know what's going on?
At what time do we return? It's 12:41.
15 minutes, 12:56. I'm going to go text them.
And you took them back?
No, you're good, Mr. Raju.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.